All right. Welcome. We'll call it order. The City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting today, Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 at 5:30 PM. Would John McNally please provide an introduction?
Hello and welcome. I'll be providing assistance to the mayor and the elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. However, there will be specific times during the meeting when members of the public can ask questions and provide feedback. The first way is by typing their question into the questions section at the bottom of the GoToWebinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. Please be sure to include your name for the record. The second way is by using the GoToWebinar interface and clicking on the raise hand option. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Before speaking, please take steps to minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your device during your allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Steven Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you, Jim. We will now have invocation by Commissioner Reverend Woodrow L. Hay, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Let us pray. Oh God, we thank you for that we've never Thank you, Lord, for the city, the state, and this nation. But Father, we need now your heal in hand upon this nation as a whole and upon this world. Thank you, Lord, for this council here in Boynton Beach, our city manager and her staff. We pray, Father, that the decisions that we make will be pleasing in your sight. Thank you for our police department, for the wonderful job that they did on last night, and that they continue to do. And Father, we know that if we come to the table, we shall get through this. We'll be so grateful to give you all the honor and all the praise and all the glory. For it's in your Savior's name we pray. Let every heart say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
All right. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Steven B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Penner Serga.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Woodrow Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to agenda approval, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? The items that I'd like to bring up is that I'd like to have a presentation or a discussion from our legal department regarding curfew, just so that Jim can explain, you know, how the city can implement a curfew. And in addition, for city manager's report, I'd like to have a discussion with the commission regarding racial inequity, summer camps, and employment opportunities in the city. School's over, summer has started, and there's going to, there's a lot of misinformation or no information out there. And we, as the commission of the City of Boynton Beach, need to get the right information to our residents and businesses.
Were those all one, was that all one item, or was that like?
No. Curfew would be 12B, and then the city manager's report, discussion about those three items is what I'd like to have for myself. And if any of the city commission has a discussion that they'd like to have with us, so that we can give direction to the city staff for our next meeting in June.
Could you repeat those three items? I apologize.
No worries. Racial inequity, summer camps, and employment opportunities. Do you have any, yeah, do you have an objection to any of those?
No, just that if it's, if it might turn into a substantive policy conversation, I'd request in the future it'd be a future agenda item. But if it's a, if it's something relative to trying to direct the city manager with a time-sensitive issue, I have no objection.
All right. And that's it. Is that any sort of policy decision would probably come back at next meeting? So this is more of consensus for direction. So may I have a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed state so by saying nay. Hearing none, the agenda is approved unanimously. Moving on to informational items by members of the city commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Um, thank you. Nothing to disclose other than I wanted to thank and show respect to, to our police department and all the participants of the protest action that have been taking place over the past day or so in Boynton Beach. You know, from everything I've, I've seen and heard, you know, that it went down exactly as it's intended to, you know, residents came out to exercise their rights. Did not do anything that, you know, would be a disservice to the city like we've seen in some other, some other locations. And, and the police to facilitate their rights, I think, showed that, that there is collaboration in Boynton Beach and that, that we respect the rights of individuals looking to protest important issues such as, is what's happening right now. So I just, I just wanted to applaud everybody involved, residents and our police department and our police chief for, you know, for handling the situation properly and respecting all parties.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Commissioner Hay. Do you have any informational items to report?
I don't have anything to disclose, but I would like to make a couple of comments myself. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Needless to say, my heart is very heavy this evening. Our world is in a deep turmoil. We all aware of the marching and rioting that's, that's going on, et cetera, that's going on in our country. That's been triggered, it's been triggered by many things. The pandemic, the loss of jobs, Trayvon Martin, and, and many other things. The other week, we had the brutal murder of Ahmaud Avery, who was out jogging and gunned down by a father and son. This last week, we had the killing of George Floyd. It, it angers us as, as people. And it should anger us as, as a nation, black and white, Hispanics and Latino. Because let me just tell you, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King said, is a threat to just Listen, my friend.
All right. Thank you.
When a people's voice has not been heard, Dr. King again said this, riots are the language of the unheard. One writer put it this way, that when change does not come voluntarily from the top, it will come involuntarily, come from the bottom through revelation, revolution, rather. I'm, am I angry? Yes, absolutely. But I also believe what I preach. I try to walk the walk. I believe in Ephesians 4 and 26, which, which teaches us, our friends, that be angry, but sin not. This is not a black problem. This is an American problem. Now we'll go a step further to even say that it's, it's a world problem. But I can hear Michelle Obama whispering in my ear. When they go low, we go high. So I'm appealing to the higher power. Lastly, I am grateful to God that this is not an issue again of black people against police officers. That's not what it's all about. We have many good police officers right here in Boynton and across this world. But we do have some bad apples in the bunch. So I'm appealing to the leaders. I challenge us to come together to help solve the many issues that faces our community. We can do anything that we set our minds to. So let's come together. Come together with solutions, solutions, solution. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Commissioner Romulus, your term to present any informational items.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay. Mayor, just my disclosures are that, again, I did meet with Bradley Miller in regards to the item that will come later on before us. But other than that, I do have some prepared remarks that I would like to read and I would ask for some time to be able to deliver that. Would that be okay?
Absolutely. Take as much time as you need.
Thank you very much. I want to share this, and this is, again, as Commissioner Hay just took the time to elaborate. This is, this is personal for, for many of us in the black community. And I knew I would get emotional if I tried to just speak from the heart. So I just wanted to make sure I prepared some remarks in order to stay, in order to stay on topic. So please bear with me. I am a wife. I'm a mother. I'm an American. I'm a woman of Haitian descent. I'm an educated woman. I am an elected official, but at the end of the day, I am black. And as a parent raising two black boys who will grow up to become two black men, I am scared because of their skin color. Their lives may be cut short because of racism. Even with all these titles, the honorable, the elected, the commissioner, the professor, it doesn't matter. I am still black. When my boys grow up, it won't matter what their last name is. I fear certain officers won't recognize the incredible young men they will have become, the work they are bound to do for their community, their kind and gentle hearts. I fear they'll still see them as just black. Although my boys Christian and David Lee are now just six and four, the older they get, the more concerned I become that my boys could be the next Corey Jones, the next Ahmaud Arbery, or the next George Floyd. I live in constant fear. This is the perpetual state that we as black people have learned to operate in. Fear makes people do unconscionable things. And someday, I fear it may be someday soon, they'll be old enough to feel that fear for themselves. And when they ask me about it, will I be able to tell them that everything will be all right? When I grew up, little kids dreamed of being police officers. They would idolize the men and women in those blue uniforms. We would play cops and robbers and only a select few would get to be the cops, and everyone else envied them. Young kids would beg to be able to sit in a police car, the front of the police car, to daydream about being able to protect their community one day and wear that shiny badge. Most of these little black kids won't have that opportunity to sit in the front of a police car and daydream. Many instead will end up in the back of a police car or in a coffin because their car broke down inside of the road, because they went for a jog in the wrong neighborhood, or because they donned a hoodie walking home from a friend's house. And despite all of this, if my sons want to become police officers, I will be proud of them because I know they have good hearts. I know they will be the change they want to see in this world and will speak out if they see fellow officers doing something wrong. Just like many of our men and women who wake up every single day to protect and serve their communities, I recognize their sacrifice and acknowledge the toll that this profession can take on them. And at times like this, I expect them to have our backs. We can no longer sit idly by and take the good with the bad. We demand accountability for injustice, better policing in black and brown communities, and blatant transparency. We need a strategy to right all the wrongs that have been committed. And when they see injustice, I expect them to show up on the scene, to stand up against the bad actors and to call out hatred for what it is. We need you now more than ever to step up and be there. Be there for those who have historically been forgotten. Be there for my boys who are still dreaming of sitting in the front of our police cars. I speak these words and use this platform to help make this world a better place for my boys and the many others. A place where they can be whatever they want to be, a teacher, a changemaker, a president, or the cop that makes a difference. In closing, I had a choice over which words I would use and what I would say. But I do these, I do this for those who can't. For those whose words were cut short with, "I can't breathe." And with that, Mayor, I am done. I just wanted to share that because as a mother who is raising two black boys in this country, I feel the pain and I feel the hurt that so many black women and so many black mothers and wives are feeling every single day. It's, it's hard. This past week has been hard. Living itch in every single day and watching my son get, get, my sons get older. It's been hard. Telling my husband not to go for a jog at midnight anymore. It's been hard. And I'm tired of living like this. I'm sure so many others are. And I'm asking for us to do something and to step up and be the change we want to see in this world and stop being silently complicit. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina, for those comments. We really appreciate you speaking about what's in your heart and in your head, and so that we can move forward here in Boynton Beach. Vice Mayor Penner Serga? I have to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
I just want to start by thanking you, Commissioner Romulus, for everything that you just said. It was incredibly powerful and, and I, I want you to know and I want everyone to know that I stand with you. You know, I, I am obviously not black, but I don't think you have to be black to, to be compassionate and to understand what is going on. This weekend, I attended a protest. And I was just so moved. And I want the people to know that the protest I attended was peaceful. People wore masks. They, they, they focused on what the message is supposed to be. It's supposed to be about George Floyd and injustice that's happening in America. It was not like what the media was portraying it to be. And I'm, I'm really worried that if that's what the public sees, just what happens late at night and not what the protesters are about, that the message will get lost. And so, you know, I, it, it has been an emotional roller coaster for me. And, and obviously I stand with all of you and and I can't breathe, and I will leave it at that. I can't breathe. All black and brown lives matter. And what's happening is that they are not being given the dignity that all of us have been afforded. And so my challenge for me is to think about how will I use my position, this elected position, to better our world? And I have to be honest, I don't know all the answers. But I'm, I, I want to learn and I want to grow and I'm willing to work with everybody because we really have to show up, not just for some, not just for some of our neighbors, but for all of our neighbors. So, so thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Thank you for your words. As for myself, this past two weeks, I've attended the Hispanic Studies through the Palm Beach County School District on May 20th. I was deposed on May 22nd by the Homing Inn regarding their Freedom of Speech lawsuit in federal court against the City of Boynton Beach. I was with the American Legion on Memorial Day. On the 26th, I attended a strategic planning session. And I really am looking forward to having a discussion with the city commission about the strategic planning that we're having for the city and moving it forward. I attended League of Cities, National League of Cities, Cities Are Essential, and we'll have a meeting with the congresspeople, Hastings, Deutsch, and Frankel tomorrow to make sure that we receive our federal funding for the city to help implement the change that we want to see. I attended the BDB Town Hall. And over the past week, I want to thank Andre Thaddys for reaching out to me to have a discussion. He went to school in Minnesota, and so he had a better insight of what's going on up there. And how do we make the, the change? And we, five, are the ones that set the policy for the city. And we need to make sure that our voices are heard, heard, and that we can pass the resolutions and ordinances to help protect our residents, our businesses, and our tourists. I spoke with also Boynton Strong. I've reached out to them to make sure that we are working together because we need to have ideas and plans to implement those ideas for that better Boynton Beach. I also want to talk about the, the people that informed me that there were going to be riots or looting on social media. Now, this is something that is scary for everyone to see. For example, Sunday at Ocean Avenue or the, the Boynton Beach Mall. And I just want to let everyone know is that our police department has the tools necessary to monitor social media and that they are aware of any sort of posting because they do monitor Facebook, Twitter, and other types of social media so that the police chief's response on Monday, that they turned away 30 to 40 cars that they felt were looking to cause damage to the City of Boynton Beach, I want to commend them for doing their job and keeping us safe. You know, this, it's past two and a half months, it's been very difficult for everyone. And as we are slowly in phase one now, what does even phase two mean? And so that's something that we, as the city commissioner, are going to have to figure out for our residents, our businesses, and our visitors, so that everyone feels safe because no one should be in fear to live, work, or play in Boynton Beach. So I'll call on the, the city commission if anybody else has any final comments before we begin with announcements. All right. Hearing none. We'll begin with June events by Eleanor Chrisell, our Public Communications and Marketing Director. Eleanor, are you there?
Okay, I am here. Do you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Thank you. That's very difficult and for me to follow up what all of you have talked about. With Christina, I have a daughter that is also black and a teenager who is participating in all of this the past few days and feel your heart. So thank you very much. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 3rd, the city will be hosting a drive-by at our brand new fire station number one from 12 noon to 1 PM. Fire trucks will be in the front driveway and a firefighter will distribute a few goodies while supplies last. Our next centennial event, Free Play at the Links, celebrates the anniversary when the Links at the Boynton Beach Golf Course opened June 7th, 1984. With the first tee time scheduled for 6:55 AM, we are expecting 300 golfers to attend throughout the day. And the first 100 will receive complimentary cart and green fees, and the additional 200 will be 1920. Currently, 200 golfers have booked a tee time already. All golfers will receive a sustainable centennial water bottle, centennial postcard, and goodie bags from the Links. On Saturday, June 6th, between the hours of 2:00 and 4:00 PM, we will celebrate the 75th anniversary of D-Day at another one of our local businesses, Boardwalk Italian Ice and Creamery. We will be distributing 75, in honor of the 75th anniversary of D-Day, American flags for display in the community and centennial postcards to promote Boardwalk Italian Ice and Creamery. We will be celebrating Flag Day on Sunday, June 14th, with a flag and centennial postcard distribution, and that location and time is to be determined. Please follow us on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and Nextdoor for updates. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Our next announcement is for fiscal year 2021 budget workshops, dates and times. Our budget process is underway. Budget workshops are scheduled to be held July 13th to the 15th, 2020, in Police Station Community Room at our new police department at 2100 High Ridge Road. The dates and times would be Monday, July 13th, 2020 at 5:00 PM, Tuesday, July 14th, 2020 at 10:00 AM, and if needed, Wednesday, July 15th, 2020 at 2:00 PM. The commission adopts a preliminary fire assessment resolution and tentative millage rate resolution at these workshops. Next, we have a proclamation to proclaim Friday, June 5th, 2020, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Miriam Lang of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America will accept the proclamation. John, could you mute her if she's here?
I, I am. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Hello, Mayor Grant.
Oh, I, Miriam, let me read the proclamation.
Sorry, go ahead. Thank you.
All right. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas every day more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on an average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. Gun homicides predominantly occur in cities with more than half of all firearms-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including in Boynton Beach, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. Protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility. Support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it. And are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas the pandemic facing America has drastically impacted communities and individuals sheltering in place, which may result in situations where across to firearm results and increased risk in intimate partner violence, gun deaths, suicide by gun, and unintentional shootings. Whereas in July 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 23rd birthday. To help honor Hadiya and more than 100 Americans who lives are cut short every day, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designed June 5th, 2020, the first Friday in June, as the sixth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join the campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 5th, the first Friday in June in 2020, to help raise awareness about gun violence. By wearing June on June 5th, 2020, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, Steven B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, the fifth day of June in 2020 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Miriam, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Grant, Vice Mayor Penner Serga, and commissioners. My name is Miriam Lang, and I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America of Central Palm Beach County. Moms Demand Action is a grassroots movement of Americans fighting for public safety measures that can protect people from gun violence. I'd like to thank the city commission and the people of Boynton Beach for supporting gun violence awareness. In recognition of the difficult time we all find ourselves in, I'd like to share a statement from every town for gun safety, of which I'd like to share a statement from every town for gun safety of which Moms Demand Action is the grassroots arm. The recent deaths of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor and Ahmaud Arbery and the countless other murders of black people in the United States that don't make headlines are beyond heartbreaking. For generations, black and brown communities have been dying at the hands of all forms of racism and white supremacy and have also been the disproportionate victims of gun violence, including by the police. The racist and senseless murders we've seen across the country are horrific and inexcusable as are the president's reckless racist and incendiary calls for additional violence. Our mission to end gun violence is linked to a crisis that is centuries older, systemic racism. Black lives matter and we must do everything in our power to dismantle anti-black racism and white supremacy. We are learning from and listening to black and brown-led organizations across the country. We are supporting organizations, particularly those led by black people and other people of color committed to ending gun violence and the impact of racial injustice. I would also like to acknowledge two of our community partners who are working at the intersection of racial justice and gun violence prevention. MAMA is Mothers Against Murderers Association. And Inner City Innovators are both working to end gun violence by providing programs and personal support to those affected by the web of trauma created by gun violence. To learn more about these vital organizations, please visit their websites at mama W P B dot org and innercityinnovators dot org. Again, on behalf of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, thank you very much.
Thank you, Miriam. Is there any questions or comments for Miriam? Seeing none, I have actually a special announcement from Craig Clark, our library director. Craig, would you please let the city know what's going on?
Good evening. Can you hear me, Mayor?
We can.
Good evening, everyone. This is Craig Clark, library director. I'd like to give you an update on our library services. As many of you know, we're offering curbside service by appointment at this point in time and reference services. These services are going to discontinue at five P M. on June thirteenth for our move into the new building. These services that will be available during the transition will be the book drop will remain open for those who would like to continue to return items. We will continue our virtual summer reading program for kids and teens. Our virtual storytime weekly and our virtual do-it-yourself craft videos. And and also our twenty-four seven digital libraries accessible from our webpage. We will, I know a reopening date will be announced at a later date. All items that are currently checked out will be due back on August third, so we extended those due dates and remember there are no late fines anymore, so people are welcome to keep those items until August third. And so keep an eye on our social media pages, the libraries and the cities and sign up for the city's newsletter on the city's webpage for further updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions for Craig? Hearing none. We will end announcements and move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address before you begin. John and I will make sure that you are able to speak. Please raise your hand or type in a question for us to know that you would like to make a comment. And I'll wait another twenty seconds or so to get the ball rolling.
Mayor Grant, I do have a hand raised by Mary Drago. And her audio.
Mary. It's it's a little difficult. Are you using? Are you using a phone? Can you take us off speakerphone? Alright, Mary. No, Mary, so I can I can hear you, but you're not very clear.
Let's try now.
Yes.
Okay. I only have three minutes. Is that correct? Not only do we have to deal with Corona disease, now we have to deal with the virus affecting waters. I appreciate all your comments. However, I'm going to deal with the mirror floor apartment proposal to be built next to Pine Point Village. One of my questions is, did the members get a copy of our letter and petition?
Are you? So you asked if we got copies of your petition for one of the items on our public hearing. Is that correct? Yes, we did receive a copy of your petition.
Thank you. Well, one of my questions is, will there be a substantial wall made of concrete perhaps at least ten feet high built between mirror floor and Pine Point Village?
You'll have to wait until we we discuss that item and ask the applicant regarding the the fence.
Will I get an answer to that?
You'll have to wait to get an answer. We're not at the public hearing yet. Aspect of the city commission meeting. Do you have any other? Do you have any other items to talk about?
There's no law to be erected. What can we do to refrain people, small children, et cetera, from coming into our property or using our pool? Will mirror floor provide revenue to protect our residents from these liabilities?
Alright. Thank you, and we will answer them later at the the public hearing.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, yes, John.
Mayor Grant, I do not see any other hands raised or any other questions posted at this time.
I see one, Caroline Powell.
Okay, I have just unmuted Caroline's audio.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. I am a new resident of the great city of Boynton Beach. My mother owned the property here for many years. And recently she passed away and I decided to move to Boynton Beach. My experience in Boynton Beach has not been positive. I would like to further speak about it, but one of the biggest concern that I have right now is the corner of where I live on Northwest and Southwest Fifth and Seacrest. We have quite a few accidents. And after the accidents, I wind up having to clean the streets and doing everything in my power to make my mother's old house, which is now my house, one of the most beautiful houses in the neighborhood. But it has been very difficult with Ms. Lee because while I just moved in from Miami, I do not know the city of Boynton Beach very well because my mother lived here. I never lived in Boynton. She has been making my life very difficult. They don't pick up my my trash. I call, they come, they look at it, they keep flagging me for things that I am told that I'm not supposed to worry about. So I would like to know how I can find positive guidance because I am one of the newcomers in the great city of Boynton Beach that is really frustrated with the leadership that is finding me while I'm trying to make my house look good.
I I understand your frustration. For the first part of your comments regarding Seacrest Boulevard, it is a county road. And your county commissioner, Mac Bernard, is the person you'll need to speak to in order to help the city improve Seacrest Boulevard in between Wilbright and Boynton Beach Boulevard. I've tasked the the staff to give us traffic information and traffic crashes in that for the past few years so that we can inform the county of all the dangers that their road has to our residents. The second aspect of the of you trying to make your home better. I think you would need to speak with our building department first. Because something that you may do may need permits, it may not. So whatever types of renovations that you may have, we sometimes require permits. So my, what I would like you to do is if you could send me an email. Is that something you can do or you can give me a call and then I can point you in the right direction? Or your commissioner Christina Romulus can also assist.
Mayor, I just wanted to chime in and let you know, Ms. Carleen, this is Commissioner Christina Romulus speaking. Your email that you sent to me earlier today forwarded to the city manager along with Mr. Adam Temple, who is the director for the Community Standards Department, who oversees the individual who you've been having concerns with. So it is being addressed and we will make sure that you're gonna get the information that you need in order to prevent any more fines from coming your way and also address some of the concerns that we talked about offline. So Lori, I I believe you're on that, correct? You received my email?
Yeah, we'll be in we'll be in contact in the next day or so. We're gathering some info.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Romulus. Alright, and John, do we have any other people with a raised hand or questions?
Not that I can see at this moment. I believe that is it.
And Crystal Gibson, this is our city clerk. I believe we did receive a online submission for public comments. Is that correct?
Yes, there was one that was received.
Alright. So I'd like to read that into the the record. Or could you read that into the record? If you have it in front of you, otherwise I'll go find it.
Yeah, yes, I can. Bringing it up now.
Alright.
It was an email. It says, "Good morning. I would like to submit public comment for today's commission meeting on a subject not yet addressed on the agenda. My name is Eva Schallas and I am a working citizen in Boynton Beach. In view of the horrific racial discrimination and wrongful aggressive actions taken by the Minneapolis police officers against George Floyd, ultimately leading ultimately leading to his death on May twenty-fifth twenty twenty, I am reaching out to you to enact change locally so this does not happen in our city. Here are the changes I propose. Establish a civilian review system in Boynton Beach to establish independent and civilian-led investigation and establish police accountability. Two, require the standard operating procedure to include specific disciplinary actions for officers who engage in bias-based profiling and violate policy. Three, ensure highly restrictive deadly force policies are in place for the police force, which should be enforced by community monitoring. Four, require the police department to adopt and enforce a written policy governing the use of fiscal force, explicitly restricting it to narrow situations and requiring officers to file written reports after any use of fiscal force. Five, aggressively pursue equal opportunity employment in the police department to increase integration of all peoples and equal protection of the law. I want my future children to grow up in a world where our city's police officers are truly our trusted servants. I want our city to be an example of anti-racism and help end this pattern of cruelty and intolerance in our nation. I respectfully ask you represent our people and standing for racial equality and the eradication of police brutality by pursuing written policy in support of such efforts. Thank you, Eva Schallas."
Thank you. Thank you, Crystal. Alright.
And with that, Mayor Grant, I will disable the options for public audience.
Alright, thank you so much. We're going to move now on to administrative. Let me double check. We have no one apply for any of our advisory boards. The positions available are building or the the boards available with positions are Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Education and Youth Advisory Board, Historic Resources Preservation Board and the Library Board. Moving on to consent agenda. Would anyone from the commission like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Yes, Mayor. Alright, Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Just item sixty.
Sixty? Alright. Commissioner Hay.
I would like to pull item A as an effort and E as an effort.
So we got A as an apple and E as an effort.
Yes.
Alright, and I would like to pull item O for Oscar. Alright, so we'll begin with item A. Proposed resolution number R twenty dash zero four four authorized mayor to sign the locally funded agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and and Florida Department of Transportation for the design of a complete street in Vision Zero project of Boynton Beach Boulevard from Northwest Fourth Street to Federal Highway.
Yes, I would like to just if anyone would have, I know this was done about a year ago, I believe. And and as I was reading the background material, I was trying to visualize as to how it's gonna look with the bicycle lane and sidewalk on one side and trees on the other side and going from twelve foot to ten foot lanes and all those kind of stuff, so I would like to to if anyone has a picture or something that they could show me how how this looks because I I'm having a challenge trying to vision of how it's gonna look.
Alright, so we'll see. Does our city engineer or public works director have presentation?
While they're coming. Exactly. I I thought that the CRA was going to be funding this, but as I read, it looked like we're going to be paying upfront and then be reimbursed by the CRA board. Is that the way it's gonna work?
So Colin Groff is the city manager. Yeah, this is a project that started actually several years ago. It was initiative of the CRA. It's part of a complete streets project, which complete streets means it's a street that care that has the ability to have all people to use, whether it's pedestrians, bicyclists, other forms of transportation along with with cars. This was one of the first areas we looked like. It's in the CRA plan. The CRA didn't fund with a grant, the first phase, design phase, which is to thirty percent. And those are the drawing. I wish I had them for you, Commissioner Hay. The CRA, I would I would love to encourage you to go meet with CRA staff that put this together. They have all of the pictures and a lot of really nice present pictures of of what it's going to look like, but it's a CRA initiated project. The way it works is the CRA will initiate the project. The city will actually coordinate with DOT to build the project. CRA doesn't build projects, the city does, so we do interlocal agreements to 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 share this. So this is a project like that. This this is the next phase of the project to go from the thirty percent design to the final design. I believe the CRA is already approved to move forward and this is the city's part of it to move forward to authorize that funding agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and FDOT to complete the design. We would love to get you pictures. We just don't have them right now.
Okay, this is from Fourth Fourth Street to Federal Highway. Is is there anything being done from I ninety-five to Fourth Street? Is that phase two? There is no phase two.
That's what the FDOT is doing and so we're working in connection with FDOT when they are redoing that intersection. Similar to the way they redid the intersection at Wilbright Road. That is the reason why we're waiting on this project. One is that we can piggyback off FDOT's construction. Two is that while our Two is that while our town square is being developed, we don't have to worry about ruining all of the new complete streets we just built.
And also Gateway will follow those same guidelines, I guess?
So I don't know if the city has a complete street ordinance or resolution. However, FDOT is working on a new intersection at Gateway that I believe will come into effect in the next two to three years. So it is, Gateway is not set to be a complete street because the CRA was able to fund the initial phase and then to piggyback with FDOT. If we want to move forward with Gateway Boulevard, that will need to be a city initiative. And I believe the CRA board did approve this as well at their last meeting.
Thank you.
All right. There's no further discussion, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 6C. Proposed resolution number 20-046. Authorize, approve and authorize the city manager to sign the revised dog park maintenance agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and Boynton Town Center Master Association, Inc. for the perpetual maintenance of the Joseph Crowder Dog Park subject to final approval of the city attorney. Commissioner Katz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just pulled this real quick. I don't need staff to comment on it, but just to acknowledge that, or show appreciation for staff for working on this. If you've been behind Target and Best Buy lately, you can see that the final phase of the Cortina is, is nearing completion. And the, the combination of Renaissance Commons in Cortina, which is, is almost a 20-year project at this point because the recession stalled it out. You know, is, Dog Park and this park area on the lake there is, is kind of a crown jewel of the community, but it hadn't been managed properly and upkept properly by the, the property association. So the city worked out a deal with them to ensure that it's, it's gonna be a top-notch facility for the residents. And when, when all these apartments are done, that the quantity, the number of people who live in the area is gonna be significant. So it's gonna be a very great place to congregate. And I'm just ecstatic that it's finally gotten to the point that the city will take over and manage some aspects of this and, and still hold the property owners accountable. You know, if you haven't been by there, check it out. The amount of, of positive growth in the area that'll help our businesses, which now sorely needed obviously, is tremendous. And this is a, a great facility named in honor of a, a great police officer who passed a number of years ago. So I just wanted to recognize staff for working to ensure that a park with the city name with an officer's name on it as a memorial is, is treated properly and that the public can enjoy it to the maximum potential. And that is all.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
All right, thank you. Seeing no more further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. I just had a quick question. Is the dog park open? And if not, when does the city think it will be open? Lori?
Yeah, I'm waiting for Andrew to chime in on that. I believe it's, it should still be, I believe it's closed, but I'm not certain.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to when it'll reopen, but it has been kept closed through the COVID issue and, and to this date just because the, the condition of it, I think, required significant time for rehabilitation. So I'll let Andrew speak.
Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. Thank you for, for pulling this item. I definitely would like to give you guys an update. We've been working pretty hard with the POA and trying to iron out some of the nuances in the agreement. One of the things that we did was to ensure that some of the, the daily tasks are getting done. The city divided those tasks so that we are doing more of an inspection and reporting to the POA so that we can let them know when there are deficiencies. So that's something that we added. That's the main reason this item came back to you. Commissioner Katz is correct. The park has been closed due to COVID, but we are not reopening it now. We are in the process of adding a fourth dog run. We, we just let the purchase order for that. That work should start very shortly. And also the POA is re-signing all the areas of the, the dog runs. So they're currently taking out the grass and will be replacing that very shortly here within the next week or so, I believe. There will be some time that we'll need to rest the place, rest the dog runs before we can open it back up. So I would say that within the next 30 to 45 days, we should be able to potentially open up two of the dog runs.
All right, thank you, Andrew. The next item that was pulled is item E, which is proposed resolution number 20-048. Assess the cost of nuisance abatement on properties within the city of Boynton Beach.
Yes, I had this poll. There are four properties involved. I went by each one of them. And there's just one of them that I thought that was making an effort to try to improve the property itself. The other three, they are just approaches. But I know it's a, it's a long-term process, but I was just wondering had we extended the courtesy to the property on Seacrest. They put in, they looked like they put in new grass. They put in new shrubbery. They paint the building. And that's at 816 East Seacrest Boulevard. I don't believe it appeared that anyone is living in that building right now. But that does seem, it does seem to be efforts being made to improve that property. So I just wanted some thoughts on that. Why that one? Because it's nowhere close to the other three. They are, they should have been taken care of a long time ago. But if someone could give some, some information on that, I would appreciate it.
Woodrow, if you'd like, we can table that property to next meeting and move forward with the other three?
Yeah, I will, that, I'll be happy with that.
Okay. And that way staff can get to you in the meantime and explain the, the cost nuisance abatement process.
Yeah, take, that's 816 South Seacrest Boulevard. Take that one off the list.
All right. So.
Mayor, I have a question on legal.
Yep.
A question for Jim, and I'll, I'll be general about this because, you know, for, I guess, safety purposes. Given the fact that properties that are, are found to be in violation as ordinance would probably have a tendency to file legal action. Is there any advice, advice from legal with regards to the commission involving ourselves in these actions at any point? Or is it advisable that we pass an ordinance? And it, it is controversial in that people who are, are found in violation that ordinance often look to, to blame the city or blame us. Is there any legal advice with regards to discussing these nuisance cases? Or the, you know, just legal advice, I guess?
Commissioner Katz, this is different than the chronic nuisance abatement ordinance.
I'm sorry, did I misread it?
Yes. So this is, I believe, the magistrate, yeah, yes. Lori?
Mayor, Adam, Adam Temple is prepared to answer Commissioner Hay's question if you'd like him to. I don't know if it's a time-sensitive matter and whether or not the delay is, is gonna cause any problem or not, but we did speak about it earlier and I told him we have Mr. Temple available to, to address that property.
Okay. Mr. Temple, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city commission, members of the public, Adam Temple, Community Standards Director. Commissioner Hay, you are correct. That property on 816 Seacrest, they, they are working to renovate that property. These are nuisance abatement costs for city services that have been rendered. So the city has expended funds to mow the property or board up the property. We've paid a vendor. This is to recoup those costs by placement of a lien. So they've been provided several opportunities through invoicing from finance in the city clerk's office to make payments before it gets to this point. However, I'll tell you, for the particular property that you mentioned during COVID-19, the property owner who was missing in action for, for a number of years did contact me. We met out at the property, told them the improvements that we would like to see to the property. And once the property is in full compliance, we would go through a lien reduction process for him.
So, Mr. Temple, is there already liens on the property?
Yes, so there's, there's a, a number of liens on the property, a number of nuisance abatement liens and regular liens that have accrued through the special magistrate process as well. So this is a property that was neglected for a number of reasons, number of years for a number of reasons. However, recently the property owner has been in contact with us. He has made significant improvements over the past two months. Everything that we've asked, he's been doing. However, again, this is to recoup costs of, for city services that we have, we have paid to maintain the property.
Very good. Thank you.
So if you'd like Commissioner Hay to make a motion to amend or make a motion to approve as stated?
I approve as stated. I move that it be approved as stated.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 6O. Proposed resolution number 20-052. Authorize the city manager to enter into a national emergency dislocated worker work style, work site, non-financial memorandum of understanding with Career Source Palm Beach County to provide temporary jobs to assist with humanitarian aid, cleanup and restoration activities due to COVID-19. I believe we have a presentation for this item?
Yes, Mayor. David Scott, Director of Economic Development and Strategy for the city of Boynton Beach. We are presenting this item for the city commission's consideration. We were contacted by Career Source Palm Beach County. They are applying for a grant through the Department of Labor to assist with those that have lost their job or have just been displaced by COVID or the long-term unemployed. This grant is a grant through the National Dislocated Worker Grants, which are discretionary grants awarded by the Secretary of Labor. These grants, again, provide resources to states to help with unexpected layoffs due to disasters or other, other types of events such as COVID-19. These grant funds will cover the cost of employing temporary workers to assist with COVID-related tasks for the city of Boynton Beach. We identified four positions and made, made them available for consideration. And they are park ranger, janitorial services, facility support, as well as outreach for some of our, our businesses. This grant will support those humanitarian efforts. The employees will be hired through Manpower, which is an independent agency. This grant supports these, these workers for approximately two to, two to three months. Again, they prefer positions that may lead to long-term employment. So they're given priority. They also pay up to, under the grant, they pay up to $17 an hour for, for positions. Upon approval of this item, the, the jobs will be posted on Employee Florida's website at employflorida.com. The recruiting will begin immediately. After about a month of screening, those candidates will be referred to the city for further consideration. And we are looking to start as soon as those candidates are approved by the city. Again, these are 12-week assignments. We're looking to start in June, if possible, and carry us through the summer. These positions pay, in our situation, are these positions pay $17 for the park rangers. Janitorial is $12 an hour. The facilities position pays $13 an hour. And the outreach for businesses is $16 an hour. And we're talking a total of 10, 15, 17, 17 opportunities amongst these four positions. I just want to touch on that position I mentioned for the business outreach position. It is not, in no way considered a compliance officer. While it does have compliance in the title, it is really more outreach and information for our businesses as they shift to opening and supports them in their efforts to comply with the governor's executive order for social distancing. Is more information. We are able to communicate to those businesses what the executive order means. And it is just our way of supporting our businesses as they reopen. With regard to the parks, it is to support social distancing again and communicate with those of our residents and visitors who attend our parks, to explain or share some of our social distancing measures to help with that. In our facilities, our, our facilities position helps with the programming in some of our recreation facilities around social distancing and communicating that message also. With regard to janitorial, that's more internal. So for example, under public works, as vehicles come in and they're serviced, this position will help sanitize that vehicle so that that frees up staff to turn that vehicle around fairly quickly and return it to service as quickly as possible. So as I mentioned earlier, each one of these positions has to be specifically COVID-related. And it is to support the governor's executive order. Also, John McNally, we also have Charles Duval on with Career Source. If the commission had any specific questions for me or Career Source, if he's available.
Hi, yes. Good evening, everybody. Just want to say good evening to, to the commission. And I am very excited to be working with you all during this very exciting project. My name is Charles Duval. I am the Assistant Vice President for Career Source Palm Beach County. And I am here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
All right, thank you. My first question is regarding, I guess, manpower is the preferred staffing agency that the city will be going through. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We have entered in a partnership with Manpower. So they will be actually acting as the employer of record for these individuals. Manpower will handle the payroll and, and things associated with, with being the employer of record. While Career Source will function as the recruiting entity. And we will recruit and screen individuals for consideration. Participants under this grant need to meet certain criteria to be eligible. And what that means is they're mostly going to be, they're mostly gonna have to be able to meet the criteria that says that they have been laid off due to COVID-19, long-term unemployed, that is unemployed six of the past 13 weeks, or perhaps they were self-employed and were laid off. So this is really geared toward those individuals who are dislocated.
All right. And so. Yeah, and so the, what I would hope is that Career Source uses our facility in Boynton Beach for the, the recruiting process, kind of like our, the city's own speed hiring event, rather than requiring people go to their Delray or West Palm Beach office. Because, you know, I feel that the, the job fair that we had did not necessarily work, but the speed hiring that the city did for its own employees did work. And so. And so I would like to hear from Career Source if that, when they do face-to-face or their recruiting process, that they will have a presence here in Boynton Beach for our residents to make it easier for them to apply after they apply.
We, thank you very much. We may be able to take that under advisement. I think what will, will end up happening, we're trying to do as much as we can in terms of the eligibility by phone, but there will, there may come a point where, where we may need a site for orientation, as we'll conduct a joint orientation with Manpower, and that could certainly be a consideration. I'll be happy to follow up with, with David for that.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. May I just add specifically the titles for our residents for those positions so that they are aware specifically what to look for? There's the business specialist, which I refer to as that outreach position for our businesses. The second is custodial specialist. That's the one I refer to as our janitorial position. The third one is facilities monitor. That's the one that address our facilities specifically. And the fourth one is park monitor.
All right. Thank you, David. You know, I believe the, the commission will, will pass this, and if we can get this information out on the city's website where we have unemployment benefits or opportunities.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the city commission? Vice Mayor Pensurga?
Thank you, Mayor. David, we, we spoke about this before, and you know how excited I am, particularly about the outreach specialists for the businesses. As I mentioned to you, I mean, really part of this recovery, economic recovery program has to be about building consumer confidence, right? If I know that there's a particular restaurant that's complying with CDC guidelines, I'm more likely to go there. It makes me feel better, and it's safer, and it's good for business. Could you talk about what we would do after, let's say, the specialist has visited the restaurant, they have observed compliance? Could you talk about what happens if they are not in compliance? Are they also going to be teaching them? Are they going to be going over what they need to do? And, and if they are in compliance, how are we going to get the word out? And how are residents going to know?
We, thanks, Commissioner. We want to make sure that these positions were not considered code compliant, associated with any code compliance or violation. So we have to be very careful that this is just informational only. So we are out there to visit every business to make sure that if they need any help, that we are providing them with that assistance and, and advice and direction. The city in no way wants to get in the, in between a business and how they operate, but we are there specifically to provide support and information. We also want to be very careful that if we visit a business and they are found in compliance, and we post that on a website, we don't want to send the opposite perception that we didn't visit you, and so therefore you are not in compliance. So we have to be very careful about how we are perceived and how this program perceived. So at this point, we are recommending that it's just an outreach position, and that we're providing support to any and all businesses within the City of Boynton Beach as they open. There are other cities that have pro, full programs that provide certific, certifications or some kind of notice that they have been visited by the city. We want to be very careful that we don't send the opposite message. We've met with the chamber. They are very supportive of the program. They too share the concern that if we start posting online or give out some kind of certificate, that will send the opposite message. So they are very, they are with us with, as we, as we provide information, and the business community is very supportive of the informational aspect and the outreach aspect.
Understood. I think those are very good points, David. So it sounds like it's really up to the businesses to say, hey, we were visited and we were verified.
Yes.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the commission? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no further, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, David. All right. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
I move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent bids and purchases over 100,000. Proposed Resolution Number R20-053 authorized the city manager to sign the proposal for the purchase of five mobile diesel generators and one mobile parallel box from Tao Power Systems of Pompano Beach, Florida, a Kohler Generator Systems distributor for the sum of $332,960 through the National Sourcewell Contract. Sourcewell procurement process satisfies the city's competitive bid requirements. May I have that motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. Proposed Ordinance Number 20-011, second reading. And Proposed Ordinance Number 20-012, second reading. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. 20-011, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property commonly known as Madison on the Avenue and described herein and owned by Jared Doros and Pure Start LLC, changing the land use designation from local retail commercial to special high-density residential, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Ordinance 20-012, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02-013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as Madison on the Avenue from C2 Neighborhood Commercial to IPUD Infill Plan Unit Development, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
All right. And then may I have item 8B removed from the table?
I move.
Thank you. Do I have a sec? Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Do we have the applicant here?
Mayor Grant, I have unmuted Bradley Miller's audio.
All right. Bradley, are you there?
I, I am. Thank you, Mary and Commissioners, staff. Do we need to do swearing in?
We do not. The quasi-judicial proceeding was conducted at the last meeting, so this is just public comment and public hearing.
All right, thank you very much. If I could get my PowerPoint up?
Okay, just a second.
And while that's coming up, if it's okay with you, Mayor, I would like to address all three of these agenda items in my presentation and then respond to comments afterwards, the same.
Yep, we set you up for it.
Great, thank you so much. This is a site that's called Madison on the Avenue. What we're requesting here is a land use amendment, rezoning, and a master site plan for the infill planned unit development zoning for a 10-unit project. Next slide, please. Our site is on the south side of Southeast 23rd Avenue, which is the extension of Gulf Road and just a little bit west of Federal Highway, surrounded there by multifamily development all the way around on the, on the south side and east and west, also across the road, and then there's some commercial spaces and uses flanking that. Next slide, please. Our request here, I went through most of this, really, I went through all this last time, so I'll be brief. We're proposing to change the land use from a commercial designation of LRC to a residential designation of special high-density residential. Next slide, please. And the same way with the zoning is that commercial zoning of C2 to the infill planned unit development, the IPUD zoning district, so that the site is encircled there in red. Next slide, please. This is the, the project that's proposed. It's got 10 townhouse units, accesses off of Southeast 23rd Avenue. There's two buildings, five units each. The slide is showing the breakdown of the square footages. You can see each unit is just a little bit different as you, as you go through that list. We're actually below the density that's allowed there just because of what fits. And again, like I mentioned two weeks ago, each unit has a two-car garage. The garages will be wired so there'll be the capability for electric vehicles to, to plug in, which I think is a great feature. We have a recreational amenity in that southwest corner, which is a requirement of the IPUD that we exceed that, that area. We have buffers all the way around the, the perimeter of the site. So, next slide, please. At the Planning and Development Board meeting, there are some, a couple of conditions that were raised, and they were discussed at your meeting two weeks ago about providing additional landscaping along the west facade and along the north facade of that front building, which is shown there. After looking at it, we realized that it was actually a rendering issue, but we have addressed it. If we can go to the next slide, please. So we had mentioned last time about installing a, a fence along the front of the, that north building, which will give those unit owners a little more security and a little better screening from, from the road. And then we took that the next level to the next slide, please. And you can see in this slide, we, the, the rendering is changed. You'll see here in a moment, I've got a comparison of the two that actually implements all of the plant material, and it also implements the black rail fence along the front there. If you can click one more time, please. This will give you an enlargement that shows how that fence will run across the front, which I think gives a real nice feature along the street frontage, separates that front yard area of the units from the, the public sidewalk, has landscaping that is still safe, so it doesn't violate any of the SEPTED requirements, matches the balcony architecture. I think it's a, it's a great enhancement. Next slide, please. So there's the, the two differences, which is pretty distinct. Once, once we, we really looked at those and got our landscape architect involved with the renderer, the slide on the right is what's shown on our landscape plan. So with that said, if you can click one more time, please, John. What we'd like to do is, with those conditions, I shouldn't click twice here, or just once, is eliminate both 18 and 19. These are the conditions of approval that were coming from the Planning and Development Board. 18, you can see under the red X, there was about the additional landscaping on the west facade. I think that was, that was a error on our part of not getting the, the rendering matched up, so it, it does look like it's a little weak in that first presentation, but with the real landscape, that's part of the landscape plan. We believe that that west facade is, is in good shape. We also have some windows that have been added on that side. We wrapped the balcony around, which were comments that came out of the review process with your staff. We've added Bahamas Shutter on that side. So I think that west facade is, is very well-treated and will be, doesn't really need the additional landscaping for condition 18. And then 19 is that north property line, which we're gonna, so condition 20, which is what staff was proposing for you tonight, reads there to remove condition 19. I'd like to add 18 as well to that, but remove condition 19 and replace with a new condition that requires, prior to permit, submittal revisions to the plan to depict a four-foot tall aluminum rail fence along the south side of Southwest 23rd Avenue sidewalk, including pedestrian gates for each of the residential units. So, next slide, please. So with that in conclusion, this, this exhibit shows how the site plan fits into the surrounding uses and community that's there. Again, we're requesting a land use amendment to the special high-density and the corresponding IPUD zoning and the master site plan that goes with the IPUD zoning, where we are in agreement with all of the conditions with those modifications that I, I summarized on the last slide of removing 18 and 19 and replacing those with condition number 20. And with that, I'll wrap up and address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Bradley. So we'll go down for the, the commission if there's any questions, and if any of the attendees would like to make comments. John, would you be able to open that up, open that up for public comment?
You want me to wait until after the elected officials comment or do that now, sir?
Well, do it now, so we have, we know if someone wants to speak now, and then we'll call on them after the city commission is done speaking.
Those options have been enabled.
Thank you. Commissioner Katz, do you have any comments before we move on?
No comments at this time.
All right. Commissioner Hay?
Just the scrubber, the, the plants within the fence, will they grow in a higher than they are right now, or will they be kept at about four to five feet?
We need to keep them lower, lower than the four to five feet. Those on there are probably about two feet, and they would, they would be maintained at that, so we don't have the, the person hanging out behind the landscaping situation behind the, the fence.
That was my point. Thank you. No further comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Romulus?
Mayor, I have no comments at the time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Pensurga?
Thank you, Mayor. No further comments.
All right. My only comment is, is that, you know, I'd like to thank the developer for building new residents for sale, and if there's any way the City of Boynton Beach can get that information to our residents, we would like to do so. So that's the only request that I have, not to put on the condition, just so that we can make sure to help the developers sell the homes as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
All right. John, did we have anyone from the public that would like to speak?
Mayor Grant, I do not see any hands raised or any questions posted at this time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any further? All right. Do I have a second for ordinance number 20-011?
Second.
Thank you. All those may have a roll call, please.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pensurga?
Yes.
Commissioner Kat?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Otis Five-O?
May I have a motion for ordinance number 20-012?
I move.
Remove.
Second.
Any further discussion? Saying none, may have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
Commissioner Kat?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
All right. And now Madison approved, may have a motion on Madison on the Avenue, major site plan modification as amended by the applicant for condition number 19 with removal of 18.
Remove. Second.
All right. Saying no more further discussion. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Moving forward to item 8C, proposed ordinance number 20-013 and ordinance number 20-014. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry for the delay. 20-013, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property commonly known as mirror floor apartments and described herein and owned by Seacrest Properties LLC, changing the land use designation from medium-density residential to high-density residential, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Ordinance 20-014, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as mirror floor apartments from R3 multifamily residential to IPUD infill planned unit development, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
All right. Thank you. And may I have item 8D removed from the table?
Remove.
Thank you. Is there a sec? Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Bradley, would you like to begin?
Yes, thanks again, Mayor. Bradlin Miller, Miller Land Planning here, representing the applicant for mirror floor apartments. This again was presented to you two weeks ago for first reading to site on the northern part of the city. We're requesting a land use amendment rezoning and again, a master site plan based on the IPUD zoning. Next slide, please. This parcel is on the northern part of Seacrest Boulevard at the very northern border. In fact, the north property line of this site is the north boundary of Boynton Beach. It spans between Seacrest Boulevard and I-95. To the north is the Palm Beach Memorial Park Cemetery. Pine Point Villas condos is to the south and then we have a single-family family community to the east. The cemetery and the single-family homes are in the county and Pine Point Villas are in the city. This parcel was separated and sold off by the cemetery back in 2006 to actually a property owner that I represented at that time, where we annexed and brought the property into the city and were approved for a 40-unit project. That was now 14 years ago and unfortunately, between the recession and I think the approvals that he had, he had a very difficult time finding a way to make it viable to construct or even to sell. So with that, my client has come in and purchased the property and we're proposing to increase the density to 58 units on here, which helps spread that cost out amongst more units and which makes it more marketable to a unit size and a price range that is more suited for that area. Next slide, please. Again, this is the land use designation. We are requesting that the land use be changed from medium-density residential, which is 11 units an acre, to high-density residential of 15 units per acre. Next slide, please. And for the zoning, it's modifying the zoning from the R3 zoning district to an infill planned unit development, which is really why a zoning district like this is put in your code to give some flexibility for better design and to be able to accommodate an irregular-shaped property here, which was a challenge for site planning purposes. Next slide, please. For our site plan, the property is a little under four acres. We have one access point, vehicular access point, that the county has required that we align that with Mentone Road on the east side of Seacrest, which gives you that little S-curve as you come in. Actually, I think that gives a nice feature. As you come into the community, there's drainage area and landscape on both sides of that road as you come into the community. Once you're inside, there's five different buildings. The buildings are going to consist of both three-story and four units, where the units stack on top of each other. Those on the slide that have the crosshatch, the angled lines on them are the two-story. So the end portions of the building will be two-story. The middle of the buildings will be three-story component. We have 142 parking spaces, which actually exceeds the requirement. This question came up last time about why do you need more? And that was actually a request from staff, and I think a good one, where these have, you can see there's a split of two and three-bedroom units. And with the three-bedroom units, there is the potential of having three drivers in a unit, where the parking rates are based on two units or two spaces per unit. So those additional spaces will help address that potential. 58 units again, at the density of the 15 units per acre of the land use designation. The unit sizes range there from around 1,000 to 1,100 square feet per unit. And again, they're a mix of three-bedroom, two-bath and two-bedroom, two-bath. Next slide, please. The amenities around the property, I mentioned the detention areas and the green space at the front of the property on the right side of the screen. There will be a bus shelter that's added to the existing bus stop that's there now. So people waiting for the bus will have a shelter to wait in. As you continue in, the ground-level unit on building five, the easternmost building there to the right, will have an office area for a manager and that office area could be used for the community, for an office space, management space, a P.O.A. space. Never seems like that space is available and this design includes that space. We have electric car charging stations that are distributed throughout the parking area, sidewalks, benches, bike racks all throughout. The rec areas are something that came up at the Planning and Development Board meeting, as well as your meeting last night. I'll address that in a moment of the two rec areas and how we can modify that. From a buffer standpoint, we do have a landscape buffer around the entire perimeter of the property. To the north side, we had proposed an aluminum rail fence at six feet high to separate the property from the cemetery. And we've worked with the cemetery owners on a condition that I'll read in here to the record here in a moment. The buffers on the east and west sides are compliant with code, both in width and in the landscape material themselves. We do have some water-tolerant trees that are included in the dry detention area that we got some kudos for from some of the PND members, which we like to hear. On the south property line, that buffer is actually twice as wide as it needs to be in width. There's an easement there. There's an overhead power line that runs across there and we are adjacent to the Pine Point Villas buffer that includes a six-foot-high hedge and a chain-link fence that's on their property that will remain there. There's no proposed change to their improvements whatsoever. So it would be just adding to their buffer. We've got a layer there of low-level hedges, medium hedges, and trees that are allowed to be planted within that area where there's power lines up above. Next slide, please. Going back to the recreation areas, we have two areas within the site and the portion of the slide on the top is what was proposed to the Planning and Development Board. And it was, the discussion was, can we have some activities for the middle-school-aged kids? The suggestion was a basketball court, which I think was a suggestion. We took a look at that. Weren't quite sure if that was the right thing to do, that it might actually attract more people to the community than perhaps wanted. And so then with additional discussion, what we did is, you can see the slide portion on the bottom, we moved the, more of the passive area over by the tot lot on the west side. So there's the pavilion and the tot lot. Some barbecue areas can go on the west side and then the eastern side can be open for just a multipurpose playfield. I think Vice Mayor Penserga suggested that idea, which it allows it to, for soccer, for softball, for kickball. Throw in a frisbee, just gives some flexibility there. We are going to have the perimeter of it include some trees. So there's some shading around by the benches and the sidewalk. So at halftime, they've got a place for some natural shade to hang out and cool down. But that's our proposal for that modification for the recreation areas. Next slide, please. This is the black and white version of our landscape plan. That shows it's a very full palette of landscape throughout the entire project and around the perimeter of the project. Next slide, please. And this is showing, I was mentioning before, the buffer along the south property line of going from the left side as you go in. The first hedge is actually the existing hedge that's in Pine Point Villas and their chain-link fence. And then we would be adding the additional Awabuki, which was a new plant material I had to learn how to say, as well as the Fakahachi grass. That's another one you've got to be careful with. The Palatka Holly tree is one that's an allowed tree within the easement for FPL and the power lines. There's going to be a nice screen there of plant material along that edge. The units themselves, the closest building to the property line is 50 feet plus there's another 20 feet of separation from the common property line to the nearest Point Villas condo. So there's about 70 to 75 feet of separation between the units themselves. And with the transition of two-story on the ends and three-story, it gives you a better visual of separation. Next slide, please. Architecturally, this is the plan that's in your package. It's the three-story component and the two-story on the ends. If we can go to the next slide, it'll add some color. And I mentioned last time, this is mimicking some of the colors and the styling that's on High Ridge Landings, which is near Copper Point on High Ridge Road with the pastel colors and the Bahamas shutters and the rail. It came out with a nice architectural design. I think will work in well within that community. Next slide, please. Just to give you some views, there's a few here, John, if you just want to kind of click through. Gives you some perspective of how it fits into the surrounding area. If you could stop there, please. And this is a street view, which is oftentimes something you want to see to what's it going to look like from the street? And that's actually looking through the, there's an existing hedge along Seacrest, right along the road, that's part of the cemetery. And then there's a hedge in the background there that's along our property line that will grow. We agreed with the cemetery to allow that hedge to grow to six feet in height, which will be the same height as the aluminum rail fence and provide that screening and separation between the two uses. Next slide, please. So these are the conditions where, if you can click one more time, where what we want to do with the Planning and Development Board conditions is eliminate 22, that gets replaced by 24. 23, we're in agreement with of adding the foundation plantings. That's really part of code already, so I think it just reinforces that. And then 24 replaces the number 22 to revise the plans depicting a consolidation of active recreational components in an effort to provide greater open play areas within the designated usable open space areas. That's a modification to the rec area to shift the pavilion over to the west play area and use the little bit larger rec area on the east side for an open multipurpose play area. And then 25, I believe, was a condition that, Mayor, you were requesting, which we are in agreement with. And I think, I believe, I want to say it was Commissioner Romulus that was asking for the coordination with the cemetery, which is condition 26, that we're in agreement with as well. And then one more.
I'll take credit for that.
Sorry, Vice Mayor.
Okay.
You got the rec area and the cemetery. One more click, please. The last one is, as it says there, additional representation. This is the condition that we worked out with the cemetery. That's, just to read it in, pursuant to the proposed site plan and landscape planting plan, the five-foot-wide landscape buffer shall be installed along the entire length of the north property line, where adjacent to the existing cemetery, the buffer shall consist of the following materials as a barrier: six-foot-high black aluminum rail fence, as shown on the landscape planting plan; a red-tip cocoa plum hedge installed, as shown on the landscape planting plan, with three-gallon plants, approximately two feet in height and two feet on center to create a continuous hedge. The hedge shall be allowed to grow and will be maintained at a height of six feet. Fakahachi grass, as shown on the landscape planting plan; trees and palms, including gumbo limbo, live oak and cabbage palm. So we'd like that condition to be included. Next slide, please. And I will conclude with this slide again, just to recap, we're requesting. Of the land use designation. Actually, that's, that's an error on there that says special high density, it's actually just high density potential. Resoning the IPUD and the master plan with. With the conditions of approval. As I presented, we do have staff recommendation of approval. With the, with the conditions and. We ask for your support and approval of the project, I think this is going to be a nice addition to the area. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Bradley. I'll begin with Vice Mayor Penserga, if you have any questions or comments.
No additional comments, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Romulus.
Mayor, I have no comments at this time, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Hay.
No further questions.
All right, Commissioner Katz.
No further comments.
All right, neither do I, I do believe we had someone earlier that had a comment regarding and a question. Regarding the, the fence along the, the board with Pine Point Villas. Which I believe the applicant answered was the, the six feet aluminum surrounded by hedges. Regarding the children, you know, which should prevent any children from cutting through and hopping the, the fence. And so I'll wait another few seconds to see if anyone has a question or would like to raise their hand for public comments.
Mayor, while I can, while that's going on, this is Bradley Miller again, just to clarify that it's. It's actually an existing chain link fence that's part of Pine Point that will remain along that south property line. So they, they have that already built in.
Okay, and is your client going to be putting hedges along that chain link fence or leaving it open?
No, there's additional hedging that goes along that property line as well as additional trees, so it'd be. Their existing hedge, which is the five to six feet high. And under their control. And then we have a similar hedge that will grow on our side of the property line, plus additional. Ground cover and trees.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Grant, I do have a hand raised by Mary Drago and her audio has been unmuted for her to speak.
Okay.
Mary, if you have two forms of audio, please turn the other one off, I believe you're getting feedback because of that. All right, I'm going to mute her again until.
We gotta, we gotta let it happen so that she can figure it out, so. Mary. Mary, you need to take it off speakerphone. Is there. Mary, hold on one second, I need to finish talking with you before we move forward. Is that we are unable to hear you properly. We can hear you and there's no feedback.
My question is, how is the property of a stone concrete wall being turned down? Is that, is that what it is now? And what are you going to do for us to help us, like saying we fall trees and hope that they grow, but it's coming. A lot, so what? How can you find the phone? Our concern is the pool and the private. Where is the community here? And we have been doing the quiet business outside now to protect the cemetery and its own home. So you, so you found it? For the convention, so only one of you found it.
All right. Bradley, were you able to understand any of that, I know that there was a request for a concrete fence? All right, Mary, I'm going to mute you for a second and. Bradley, were you able to understand what comments Mary was asking, or do you have any prior comments from her?
No, really, I couldn't understand what she was asking, I did pick it up in a prior part of the meeting about a 10 foot high concrete wall. First of all, 10 foot high concrete wall would violate code. So that's out of the picture. And we're, we're not proposing a wall along that south property line. Think with the landscaping that's, that's there and with the chain link fence that's there. It provides that separation and barrier between the two properties. A, a concrete wall to me becomes a, a target for graffiti and vandalism that. A, a hedge is going to restrict, I think with what we have proposed is going to be sufficient. Landscaping and in fact, it exceeds the code requirement along that, that south property line.
Okay. And then I guess the, the other thing that I believe they were mentioning is, is that were you at the property and. What was the, the decibel level regarding 95 at the, that property? I'm sure that there are sound walls. But were you still able to hear the highway?
You're asking me, Bradley?
I am asking you.
You can, you can definitely hear the highway from, from the property, sure. There is a sound wall along the DOT right of way that extends about maybe. A third to a half of the west property line. We have a letter that's actually in the staff file from the DOT that they're considering, I think it's 2024. Of they would do a study to evaluate if that needs to be extended.
Okay.
But there, there would be. The ambient noise from, from the highway that close is really an unavoidable situation.
And then she was able to write her, her questions out. That they were requesting additional fencing, our concern is community pool and the noise. We, we have sound walls, we care concerned about children coming into our property and the liability. So the, the main concern is, is that they're afraid that. Their neighbors will not be good neighbors and. I guess, you know, because of the, the management company. Are you aware of security cameras that will be on the property to monitor who is coming in and out of the neighborhood?
We haven't really designed a security system, but those are pretty routine improvements to a community like this today. So with, with the management company and, you know, obviously that's a, that's a trespassing situation, that's, it's a pretty serious. Situation. Where, and I believe at the last meeting, it was confirmed by one of their residents that. That their fencing actually wrapped around the corner and extended south on Seacrest. To have a barrier along Seacrest as well. So it is a, a good neighbor thing, we will do our part from a management standpoint. So I think they're. They're protected there from a different, few different angles.
Correct. And I have a question as well, are you aware of any community to the south of Pine Point Villas?
Communities, residential communities?
Yes.
There are some, as you continue, south on Seacrest, but I don't know them specifically.
Okay, because I just wanted to make sure that. They're, they don't have additional information that they've had past history where. Their communities from the south are going to their location. But I believe that. There. There are single family homes just to the south of that, that children are, there's single family homes. To the east that children are, and so I don't feel that this is going to be overly burdensome. With the children affecting. The Pine Point Villas. Okay. So thank you. John, is there anyone else that has a question or comment?
I do not see any at this time.
All right, thank you. We will now. Ask, is there any further questions from the commission? Hearing none, may I have a motion on ordinance number 20-013?
So move.
All right. Seeing no more discussion, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Hi.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye, sorry.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance number 20-014, may I have a motion to approve?
We'll move.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Any further, seeing no further discussion from the commission, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
All right. And then may I have a motion to approve the Mayor floor apartments major site plan modification. With the amended conditions of approval as outlined by the applicant's presentation.
So move. Second.
All right, seeing no further discussion from the commission, may I have, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to ordinance number 20-016, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida. Amending and deleting various articles and sections of part two and part three of the code of ordinances. Providing with the creation of chapter 27 advisory boards and committees. Providing a comprehensive update to city rules governing advisory boards and committees. Providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All right. Going to open it up for public discussion, is there anyone on this item? Seeing none? May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Vote is five oh.
All right, thank you. Moving on to propose ordinance number 20-002. And approval of the master plan modifications are tabled until June 16th. And so we will leave those items for next meeting. We'll move on to the city manager's report, review and discuss staff's report on the city's home based business regulations as compared into with the. Village of Wellington's home based business standards. I'd like to thank the, the commission for allowing the city staff to research this topic.
Thank you, Mayor, Mike Rumpf is going to speak to this item, we, we did some research on Wellington's regulations, compared them to ours. To give you some base to start your conversation on where you, you may desire to amend our existing code. Mike, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this and I appreciate the opportunity to review these for you. I can answer specific questions, but I'll begin with just a summary of our findings. You can tell that cities are probably originating from the same template that was established years ago on how to regulate home based businesses because there's. Similar terminology, similar categories of standards. Their specific standards differ, of course, depending on jurisdictions and how they want to. Regulate home based businesses, but there's a lot of similarities. Our findings indicated that the city of Boynton's are slightly less stringent in several categories. But also. Sorry, I hear the background, I've been working with the TV on, someone's been watching the news, let me shut it off real quick.
Thank you, Mike, and so while he was there, the, we did receive a little bit of a presentation and I think the, the main issue. That I wanted to, you know, that I see that was the difference was allowing of an employee. To help with a home based business. You know, growing up, you know, with the tech, seeing what it was, everyone said you could have, you know. Start a company in a garage. And that's something that we need to allow people to collaborate in their homes to, with businesses to help with entrepreneurs, especially in. This economic time that we are in. And so I'll, I'll let Mike come back.
I'm sorry, I had to step away and turn the TV off, which I've sort of gotten used to working with the past couple hours during, so I had to turn it off. If I miss answering what you just asked, say so, but as I indicated in the staff's write-up, this has prompted a review of how we are reviewing businesses. And you can tell traditionally, these are intended to regulate businesses in a very compatible, conservative way within residential environments. So in most cases, similar to the regulations of other cities, use of garages has traditionally been very restrictive. Even to the point of restricting it from being used for storage of materials. Particularly heavier commercial or contractor storages. Now that's for a couple reasons, one, to keep the activity in the house within the confined area, which is usually by percentage area of the entire home. But secondly, if you allow a garage to be used for the business or storage. Then you will most likely lose that garage for the storage of a vehicle. And most single family homes are required to have a minimum of two parking spaces. So these are conservative regulations and I think knowing that is a new day. We want to promote businesses, this is.
Executive team.
Another way of regulating or accommodating incubator systems. In, in thousands of homes within the community with little impact. So it's a new, it will require a little bit more revamping of our regulations to allow activities. Again, I also point out the difference between zoning regulations and performance based regulations. If we stick to performance, we have sound ordinances which may address sound impacts. If we want to release, be a little bit more lenient and allow activities in the garage. Then they have to be done in a, in a more soundproof manner, but we allow it, right now we don't. So if we want to go and take these regulations one step farther. With more flexibility and allow it more diverse uses. We can do that, I'm prepared to do that, and I think that it does accommodate economic development activity in the city and open up. A lot of incubator opportunities. I'm not sure if that's where you're going, because I had to step away and mute the TV, so please let me know what more I can answer.
No, that, that was kind of it, the, the allowing of an additional employee. With a home based business is, is something that I think I'm looking to make the, the change.
Sure, staff does not, staff supports that, sure, and that's a, that's a very simple change.
And that's, that's kind of it, because looking at it, our home based business. Ordinances are a little bit leaner or less restrictive than there at Wellington.
Yes, slightly.
And so I'll ask the commission. if we can give consensus to staff to allow for one additional employee on a trial basis and to see how that works and to come back within a year or so to see if any changes need to become permanent.
Good would be.
All right. I got thumbs ups from the video. Commissioner Katz?
Sounds good.
All right. So, Mike, do you have your direction?
And it will return with an ordinance for you to review.
All right. Thank you so much.
Mayor, I do have a question for Mike briefly.
Yes.
Mike, how does this apply to homes within HOAs? Is it, is this uniform or what's the situation?
We don't differentiate in our regulations. Of course, HOAs can regulate more stringently than what the city allows. So we will put the door, it will be available to them and them to be regulated on their own.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So the the new item that I added on to tonight's agenda is having that discussion about racial inequity, summer camps and employment opportunities. The the point of having the conversation of racial inequity is that, you know, I mentioned it before, trying to get our staff educated with the racial equity institute. And I think, you know, we as the city commission need to create something. We're open to ideas for the plan to increase awareness of racial equities and racial equality. One of the ways that we can do this is have a task force or advisory board. You know, the other thing is, you know, having, you know, the the presentations that we had from our different departments and how we are combating racial inequities in the city. And so those are the two ideas that I have. I'd like to to hear your thoughts and to see how, what we can do to set the the direction in the right way for the city of Boynton Beach. So does anyone have any comment regarding the two suggestions of departments having presentations or a task force or advisory boards?
My first take would be a task force. A task force that would include some of our citizens, our leaders from the community, as well as some of our staff to to take a look at and see if and where there may be inequities and equities. And then come out with come back to us and we we have some discussion with their recommendation on possible solutions. So I think the task force, in my opinion, at this point, would probably be a good choice. And we go move in that direction.
All right. I I agree with you. That way, it's based upon, you know, people who apply or nominations from the the city commission. And that way, we can work with the staff and the city manager's team to have a productive meetings and a directed goal where we can identify and solve the inequities that our residents and businesses are facing.
With leaders included. Okay.
Yeah, no, it's basically we we it's it's our task force is not open to everyone. And so that way, you know, I believe we'll each get a person to nominate. And then we'll have the the city manager also look through the applicants as well to determine who has the the best skills and leadership and at the time to be as part of this task force. And so Lori, I want to know if you have any comments regarding that.
Yes, just a question. If I'd like to have, I'd like to hear from the commission of what you expect or what are your goals to achieve a little more specifically and not not be so broad and let that task force have actual tasks to do and work towards so we can prepare a deliverable to bring back and and not disappoint anybody or I just want to have a clear direction from all five of you of what you'd like them to to literally do. And and think about it and perhaps send me emails and or we can prepare. If I get your feedback perhaps, and then I could prepare what I think is a a generalized idea and maybe bring that back to you or share with you and get an okay. So we and I'd like to sit with staff and perhaps provide some feedback and input on that as well.
I think that's great. And so I think the the way that we should move forward is is that the the city commission, if they have any ideas, to email them to the city manager this week. And that way, the the following week, she can discuss with staff on how to move forward. And that will have an item on next meeting's agenda of how we can move forward with a racial equity task force.
And Mayor, also give a few can give me some ideas of who you think would be what you would like to see as stakeholders and participants on the on the committee, from what backgrounds or, you know, professions or what have you.
So, you know, after, you know, seeing David Scott's tourism board and reaching out to that, I think that we're going to reach out to the the certain community activists. And yeah, as we mentioned, you know, heard from the public comments that were read into the record, she had five different tasks that she wanted the city to implement. And I think we need to give credence to those as well as almost a starting point where, you know, the discussion of having the the citizens and police advisory board. You know, it's not something that you know, the the point is to have a discussion to air out the idea and why it might be good and why it might be bad. And that's something that you and your staff can do. And so it's, you know, working with the community activists and different leaders that the city commission. So we're not asking more than ten different individuals, I believe, from the Boynton Beach, whether they're business or residents to get involved.
So I would recommend not more than ten because scheduling and employing the group together from a practical standpoint, logistically might start getting difficult, so
Exactly.
I would ask we keep it under that.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Katz?
Send me your thoughts. I'll put put some a summary together and we'll prepare an agenda item, I'll chat with staff, and then we'll bring something back for our July first, I think, or meeting.
Okay. All right. And that anything that we need to discuss, we can do, it's July seventh?
Oh, is it? Okay. Remember. Yeah, good.
And so we'll we'll hopefully have a discussion before next meeting about where it's moving forward and hopefully get the public input.
Okay.
The second item is summer camps. I saw on our city website that on May fifteenth, we canceled summer camps. And, you know, I'd like a presentation from our Parks and Recs department for different organizations and groups who need, who would like to organize children and use our facilities. In addition, I would like our Parks and Recs department to piggyback on what the school district is doing. I know that there is African American Studies event, Hispanic, and then I'm just aware of the Center for Juvenile Justice is having their youth summit virtually on June twentieth. And so I'd like the the city to help promote both the county and school districts youth events that are going on virtually and maybe reach out to other nonprofits so that you know, we can use our facility. Let's say there's, you know, using a projector for an Ezel Hester if people are unable to have the internet and electronics. Mayor?
Now, one, one initial comment, if I may, Mayor, is I know the the governors released the executive order to allow organized sports, but right now, we're still under the county's order and we are not allowed to. Our recreation facilities are not open to the public as of this time. So that that does impact, we don't know when, if they're going to through the summer or not, open them, but I'll be inquiring on our next emergency managers' call because it's kind of been quiet in that area for a little bit now. So I just that that's a hindrance for us immediately is is having access to our facilities. And we have had discussions about nonprofits potentially bringing some camps in to use them, but they can't use them right now.
Okay. I appreciate that. And so then it's it's even more imperative, how do we get into the individuals' homes and having the the community activists? Because we do not want the children of Boynton Beach having nothing to do this summer.
Mayor?
Commissioner Katz, yes?
Yeah, I was gonna chime in. I think I've, you know, I've been involved in conversations with the school district relative to this stuff as a result of my other job. I I think that our best thing is to simply refer people to the school district and their online resources as far as using city facilities. The school district has no plans to use any of their facilities because of the liability and the risk. So I would, at this time at least, until the summer moves forward and maybe things improve, I would, I'd strongly oppose using our facilities because of the potential risk to to people or our staff.
All right. But then I would, I guess, ask that our marketing department work with the the school district to give our residents that information. And I'll also forward to the marketing department, I get updates from Baptist Health about different free, different physical activities that they can do virtually. What I don't want to see, and this goes to the racial inequities, that people without internet or electronics are left out. And so that's something where where, you know, I don't know where the ball falls, but hopefully we can find someone or work with someone to help pick that ball up for people who don't have access to the internet or to electronics.
Mayor, I just recently school board member Erica Whitfield reached out to me to 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 raise, and we talked about it years ago, and I I just think it was more of a monetary issue for many agencies, but, you know, addressing the digital divide, obviously, the school district experienced that greatly with this COVID and trying to make sure they can school children during for a school year. So we we have committed to to work from the standpoint of wanting to do what we can to participate, perhaps in some form of a partnership to help eliminate that divide in in the Boynton Beach community. I just mentioned to her that we don't know what that looks like financially or what those partnerships look like, but we are definitely on board to, you know, collaborate with the district when they're ready to, you know, to try to do something. So there are discussions, it's not an easy task, it's it's a big one. But I know, I think the district's committed to really taking a look at it.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Romulus?
Lori, when is our library set to go online again?
So I think, Craig, we don't have an actual reopening date. They're moving, I'm going to think it's going to not be until early July. We don't have an actual reopening date yet until they can get moved in.
Okay. And then, and I remember we also discussed having internet access within downtown. Is that something that was accomplished in our construction process?
Colin, I need your help on that one. We were, yeah, we did.
So, yes, Colin, yes. We have the infrastructure to do the wireless in downtown when you're in the parks. We're adding some equipment. Ultimately, the answer is yes, we will have the wireless internet, free internet connections in the downtown area.
How far away, how far away are we from that going online?
Probably a month or two after we move in. It's really, it's remember, we're going to move into our city hall, there's construction still going on. So it's when the construction is complete.
Several months. It'll at least.
Colin, is there any sort of internet over at Sarah Sims or outside of Carolyn Sims?
Well, that's a question for John. John's on, John can probably answer that question better than I can on those stations.
All right.
Yeah, Mayor Grant, I believe that the Sims Park, the renovation did include wireless access points throughout that park. I believe that is currently online and available. I am not positive, I'm not sure, we do have Wi Fi at the Carolyn Sims Center. I'm not sure how, it's intended for inside use. It does bleed a little bit outside just because of the the coverage throughout the building does penetrate the walls and is available for some number of feet. I can't say how many feet outside of the building that is available for, but it is, it is slightly available. It wasn't intended to cover the whole parking area or the the recreational areas outside of that that location, though.
Okay. And I don't believe we have anything for the the Fields V Zal Hester, is that correct?
We do not currently have anything at this point.
Okay. So, John, I'd like to get a report regarding Sarah Sims and how much data we're providing to our residents.
Okay.
Just Carolyn Sims? The building in the
Sarah Sims.
Oh, the park. Okay.
Yep.
Right. The park was our first experiment with this, and it seems to be working. I think we can collect that data. We'll have the downtown going next, and it is in, as we rehab parks, that's one of the things we're looking at doing is adding that Wi Fi.
All right. Thank you. And then the the last topic is employment opportunities. I know that I'm glad that we, as the commissioner, are going to work with Career Source and the federal and state government has allowed us the ability to hire some individuals through a staffing agency. You know, having learned this past few meetings that our job fair was not successful with less than 10% people being hired. I think we, as a city and commission, need to learn who is the preferred staffing for the construction before our contractors or developers so that we can direct our residents to them. Secondly, I think the the city had an amazing speed hiring event where we actually partnered with, you know, the same day with Feeding South Florida. And so I would like to see if our economic development strategy team can reach out to our chambers and create a speed hiring event for the local businesses so that anybody who pre registers can get an interview. And that way, we will hopefully have our residents get employment, whether it gig, underemployment right now, because we need to make sure that people are working because unemployment benefits are not going to last throughout the summer. And so we need to make sure that our residents are going to be able to start working in the fall. And it's much harder to start a job when you're not working. So that's something that I'd like to ask the the commission if we can give direction and hopefully if we ever receive any state or federal funding, that we could direct it towards that speed hiring with the local businesses.
And Mayor, once COVID, if we ever get over it, however, you know, we have every, every desire to do the speed hiring of it again. Obviously, we just can't right now, but we would certainly, I love the idea of reaching out to the chambers and trying to collaborate. It's just getting past COVID, but yes, I I imagine they would be very interested in that.
So Lori, I want to know to do what we can while COVID, because we don't know when it's going to be over or if it's ever going to be over. So I want us to start now and see what we can do. And when we hit the roadblocks of having personal to person, person to person contact to figure that out. But the the pre registry of applicants who are looking for work, I think that's where the city can help any sort of business because you have so many people that go to Indeed, government jobs, Career Source, Employ Florida. And every time you apply, it's like running your own, running an individual race because you might apply to five different places and it's running five races at the same time, trying to find a job. Hopefully, with the this, the city being a central location and having that database of people who want to work in the city, we are able to work with our own businesses so that, you know, we are duplicating efforts of Career Source and a lot of other businesses. But it's something that I feel that the, we need But it's something that I feel that the we need to do as a government for our residents. Because if we don't do it, then means someone else is, and we don't necessarily know how well they're being treated. And so, you know, if you can give us a kind of a report how the the speed hiring event went with the the city and how we were able to compile all of those applicants.
Okay, we'll do.
So
Mayor's question. So so just to summarize, like, we had a speed hiring event for city positions. The city is now going to hold a speed hiring event for private businesses?
We are going to hold a speed hiring event for our residents and people who are looking to work in Boynton Beach and then try to assist and then be that clearinghouse. Kind of like what Indeed does, because you have so many people that send out their resume to individual employers. This way, if someone says, I need to hire somebody, we, as the city can give them that little leg up. You know, I understand this is new because we are duplicating what other industries are doing. But I'm okay with figuring out what we do wrong so that our residents know how to move forward. For example, you know, it's kind of like using manpower as a staffing agency with Career Source. You know, that gives our residents a leg up if they've been trying to work with manpower before for those positions that we're hiring. And so that's kind of where the city can work with the different staffing agencies possibly.
What what staff in the city would take on these responsibilities of becoming a this job connection source within the city? What staff would be responsible for these? These activities?
This is economic development. You know, I know that David and John are very busy right now. And so the the point is, is that I'd like, you know, information from HR, how they got so many applicants to try to work for Boynton Beach and then give them that information of the the staffing companies. Because we need to make sure that our residents are working. And I I understand that this is new territory for a city. Because we're not, you know, like you, we saw earlier tonight. We are trying to hire people, but we're not doing the recruiting and we're not doing the hiring. We're just the ones that are signing off as the government to say, we have a position that they could fill.
And I I get the intent. I'm not, I'm not questioning the intent. I'm just trying to logistically logistically understand. So so the city would become job source within the city.
That that's the hope. Because
I I would need a lot more information as to whether or not this has been tried before to understand if if this is really the role of government versus allocating money to fund a job source further or or another third party. Is has, is this something that we have a template, someone's tried this, or it's been researched and and outside of hiring for our own internal purposes for city positions for for a city to to do the legwork to to link private businesses with employees? Is there an example to refer to?
No, it's the the only example is the city doing it for itself. Is that we knew that we needed so many people hired, and so we had that pool. For example, out of the 119 applicants that came to our career fair our job fair in February of 2019, what is the status of them? And that's kind of where I want to make sure that I am doing whatever I can to help people in this, our residents in the city of Boynton Beach get jobs.
Mayor?
Yes.
What I hear a lot of is that many times when they go to submit their app, there's always something missing. Would we extend this so-called job source within the city or whatever to hold our Boynton Beach entrepreneurs' hand to make sure that they have all their ducks in a row? Is is that is that part of the concept or idea? Because I somewhat agree with the Commissioner, Commissioner Katz as far as I I guess we need to discuss it further because the objectives are not totally clear right now as to exactly what we're going to be doing.
No, I I understand. And so the the aspect that I have it is, is that like you mentioned, people who have something missing in their application, if they miss it, that means they have to start a race all over again with the next job, even though they only missed one thing. And so we want to help people if they hit a hurdle, not have them start the race over again. And so I'm I'm happy to have a further discussion with the city staff. And I encourage everyone to do something as well, to see what the city can do to make sure our residents are employed. Mayor. And and that's kind of where I'm at, is that I'm just coming up with ideas, and I do appreciate your comments. And you're correct. Maybe it's that we need to work more closely with the staffing agency, Career Source, but you know, that's why I asked to have Career Source come here because they have a place in Delray. So does that mean we're going to have people from Delray or West Palm Beach coming to Boynton Beach to work? We want to make sure that our residents have the those jobs in the city. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I just wanted to add that to help you, to help push these ideas forward. I'm going to reach to out to the chamber and see what they can do. I know they've hosted job fairs in the past, so perhaps we we can learn from what whatever they've done. So I will reach out and I'll bring back whatever information and share that with staff. But if if they've done a lot of the legwork, I don't want to reinvent the wheel if they've already done it. And that gives us a lot of lessons, too.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
I I I agree, Mayor. I I love your just willingness to be innovative and to think outside the box and to help our residents. I think it's very important. And again, I commend you for doing that. I I think what I would want to just hear is from the small businesses and the businesses that are within our city limits. Do they even need to be hiring people right now? Because I know we've gone through a lot of layoffs. Maybe they're at capacity. Perhaps they are willing only to just bring back those that they asked to step down once COVID started. So I'm just not sure if we're not kind of going a little you know, putting the cart before the horse, if if you will. So I'd like to just make sure we have all those discussions and ask the right questions before we try to start doing something. And then we're we're kind of, you know, chasing our tail. So I do commend the idea, and I just want to make sure we vet it out properly before we try to implement anything.
All right. And I appreciate all of your your comments and to allow me to have the discussion. And so this is something that I think we'll all be working individually. And if we could come back and discuss how we reach out to our own partners, whether it be the chambers, businesses, staffing agencies, so that we are doing our job to make sure that our residents are working because it's it's very scary because, you know, I got an email today that unemployment benefits are not coming in. And they have rent, they need food, they have, you know, utilities and the city, you know, during the last depression, you know, you know, during the last depression, the government helped out. And when the city hit the the Great Recession, we lost 40% of our property valuation. It leads to 40% lower taxes. And so I want to make sure that people want to live, work, and Boynton Beach.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Our next thing is that after City Manager's report, we have no unfinished or new business. And we're going, moving on to legal. I do believe we have someone from FLSC LLC, Textile Recycling. Are they here? Or do we have any comments from Jim regarding this?
I know that the city manager has been in contact with the representatives of the business, and they've asked for some extensions of time to make their payments and some adjustment of their program, which either the manager or the representative can can describe in more detail. There is the issue of outstanding fees that are owed to the city. So that should be part of the discussion. As I understand it, there was an offer made by the company to pay 50% of what they owe at this particular point and pay the balance off over time. So that could be amortized over some period of time, say a year or 18 months, something of that nature. Because it's a significant amount of money that is currently owed to the city.
And so, Jim, if we remove this from the table, can the city commission discuss accepting that offer?
Yes, sir, you can.
All right. May I have a motion to remove from the table? All right, I got it. First, from Commissioner Katz, the second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
The representatives from Florida Textile Recycling are are on the call tonight or on the meeting, Mark Douglas and Chad, so they're available to answer questions and perhaps state their state their offer if you'd like.
So I just unmuted.
Mark Douglas and
Mark and Chad. And and so I just want to have the discussion with the commission first before we open it up to Florida Textile. You know, I'm in favor of accepting the the 50%. You know, that's money into our general fund that we are able to spend to hopefully help certain nonprofits that can use that that money wisely. As for the amortization, you know, I believe a year would be appropriate and that any changes to the the contract, we'll be, could be amicable at next at our June 16 meeting, so long as the 50% payment is made. And so I'll open it up if the the commission has any comments on my comments, or if they'd like to let Florida Textile speak.
Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I don't know if this is a question for Lori or or the city attorney. Do we have any documentation regarding the, I guess, the the revenue or the 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 pounds of product acquired? Because we're being asked to reduce the price, but we don't we have no idea what, you know, the business has been. I know they've stated the business has been less less than anticipated due to less sites than than desired, but what's the basis for this reduction other than being said it's not working out and they want to pay less?
I do not believe we have that data. I would have to, Mike Rump, if has anything been submitted to you? I have not personally seen anything submitted in terms of pounds of of clothing collected. Their anticipation was to locate 50 bins throughout the city, and and they've only been able to locate 15. So I I think it's safe to assume they probably pulled in much less in in terms of the quantity of clothing. But Mike, do have we actually received any data from them? I don't believe so.
No, no, I haven't. I just kept working with them on tidying the bins in the city. That's it.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else from the commission? So I'm gonna open it up to Florida Textile if they would like to have any comments.
This is Mark Douglas. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. LaBrae. Thank you for allowing us to to speak this season. I hope everybody is is safe and healthy and with everything that's going on right now with you know, in our country. Um, yes, I, we we did make a proposal to to Ms. LaBrae's office. You know, we've we've had a number of different challenges in the program since the beginning. You know, we we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and and also the willingness for you guys to work with us to to be able to to continue the program for the residents. But on on a much smaller footprint than than what would what we originally had and anticipated. You know, we we've had many different challenges with the program, not only in 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 the city of Boynton Beach, but in in other cities as well. Now, of the amount of bins and the amount of participation that we thought we might be able to get, not only from the residents participating to use the bins, but also from the the business owners allowing us to to place these bins with their commission on the various different properties. And that coupled with, you know, different codes and and other things of of setbacks and and other things like that, that that we've had. You know, we've we've just run into, you know, a number of different regulatory, different things with codes and code requirements and buffering and other things like that. That, you know, the program just was never able to to reach anywhere near its anticipated level of participation for us. You know, we initially had had ramped up and purchased 50 bins in anticipation of being able to you know, to be able to to provide these things on on different locations, both city and and private properties with not only the owner's permission, but of course, with the permission of of staff based on on codes and and other things like that. We 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 presently only have 15 bins in in the city. And and obviously, the last couple of months since COVID has been here, we've continued to sell, excuse me, continued to service the bins. But many of our customers and clients that would normally purchase some of the stuff from us have been closed as as non-essential businesses. So that that has has exacerbated our our own issues even more so. Has, you know, we've we've continued to outlay expenses to service bins and and again, not just in City Boynton, but in 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 the other locations that we have as well. And and we have quite a bit of inventory right now. So we we had proposed to 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 pay 15,000 and change, assuming that the commission would grant us the ability to do that. We could certainly have that paid prior to the next commission meeting, you know, pending, are moving forward together and then work on something if if the commission would allow us to pay the balance over a 12-month period and in addition to starting to make regular monthly payments as well.
Thank you, Mark. And so Jim, do we need a motion to to make that formal offer?
You need a motion to authorize the city attorney's office and the city manager's office to put that offer in writing, their offer in writing, and return it to the commission at the next commission meeting for formal approval. As you noted, conditioned upon the city receiving the in advance of the commission meeting.
Thank you. All right. Is there any further discussion? Saying none? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes for unanimously. And so the that last item, so Jim, you're gonna have to be a little quick with this, is regarding the aspect of a curfew.
Yes, sir.
You know, we spoke about it Wednesday night, you know, and it's limiting the the freedom of assembly provided in our First Amendment of the Constitution. And can you just briefly explain, you know, when it would be implemented, you know? Why is it allowed? And how is it done?
Yes, sir. It's allowed because it's provided for in Florida statutes. Um, in, in a chapter that ominously begins with the title of phrase riots, routs and unlawful assemblies. And it provides for the declaration of a municipal, local, um, state of emergency, if you will. Uh, and that declaration has with it the right, amongst other rights, to impose a curfew. Obviously, that's a very, um, strong process that has a lot of implications on a citywide basis. So the statute provides that that type of declaration and a curfew, uh, is only good when declared by, in our particular case, the city manager, uh, the police chief, um, and the mayor sign off on it. It's only good for 72 hours unless it is extended by the city commission as a whole, uh, beyond that particular time period. So there's that safeguard built in that, uh, neither the manager, the chief nor the mayor, uh, would act too hastily uh, to protect the interest of the public, but that there would be the opportunity to see how that functions and then it could be extended by the city commission. So knowing that there's a time period when it could be done, the timing of when to implement it is important, because you only have 72 hours before you have to have the need for a special city commission meeting. Had one bin, say, by way of example, uh, issued, uh, this past Sunday. Uh, when, for, there were first rumors of, um, of, of gatherings that might have necessitated the need for a curfew. We would have been, had the benefit of a commission meeting tonight where the commission could act. But as, if it were to be implemented, say this coming Thursday or Friday or Saturday night, uh, there's no commission meeting schedules, so the commission would have to meet in a special session to extend it.
Alright, thank you, Jim. And that leaves us to, uh, future agenda items. Is anything the, the commission would like to discuss before we end the meeting?
Mayor, I just want to have some clarification as to this discussion about the curfew. Perhaps Lori or the police chief, is there a recommendation right now that there be a curfew, is that, or there is no recommendation? I know other cities have started to.
Yeah, well, there, there's no recommendation. I believe that our, our police are doing a very good job making sure that our residents are safe and that anyone who is looking to cause trouble in the city is moved, uh, and is deterred from causing that trouble. Um, I just wanted to, you know, let the, the commission know what the, the rules are for the curfew in case it needs to be implemented.
Understood, thank you.
Yes.
If we have to implement curfew, that means that, uh, couldn't, on an emergency base, you as mayor, city manager, uh, and the chief of police, go ahead and sign and, and do it, and then we could address that after the fact. For the, you know, if we need to go beyond the 72 hours, uh, have the special meeting, but maybe just that one time will be enough.
Correct.
Am I, am I on, uh, on the right track here?
Correct, we're, we're hoping that we never have to implement the curfew.
Right.
And I just, uh, wanted the commission to know the, the policies that we have here in the city of Boynton Beach.
Mayor, just to be clear, the, the 72-hour period is the initial maximum time period, it does not have to last that long. Those that, those that, uh, have the right to sign the declaration and the order of curfew have the right to rescind it as well before the 72 hours is up. Um, so, um, that's a maximum time period. As I said, it could be extended beyond the 72, but the commission has to meet to do that.
Alright. Alright, thank you. And, uh, before I go, I just want to let people know I've been drinking nonprofit kombucha, it is not beer. Alright.
Uh, you can tell us anything.
Alright, no worries. Alright, may I have a motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, John, you ready?
Yes, I am. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at www dot Boynton hyphen beach dot O R G. This concludes tonight's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's city of Boynton Beach commission meeting. Be safe and have a great night.
Aye.
Night.
Aye.